You are on the record.
Thank you. Good morning. Today is Tuesday, February 2nd. Time is nine oh one. The board is in session to conduct its weekly open business meeting. Just to remind you, if you're on WebEx, please mute your microphones when you're not speaking. All three commissioners are present. Also with us are, could you introduce yourselves?
Trent Triple, Clerk's Office.
Bob Perkins, Ada County Procurement.
Bruce Crisco, Operations.
Bob Batista, Ex- Belido.
Beth Mon Treasure.
Bob, your predecessor.
IT guy.
Heather McCarthy, Press Corps Officer.
Okay, thank you. Madam Court, for the changes to the agenda.
No, they're not.
May I have a motion to remove unfinished business from the table?
Mr. Chair, I move to remove unfinished business.
From the table.
From the table.
For consideration.
For consideration.
I'll second that.
Thank you. You've heard the motion. Is there a discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So, we have procurement with us for the award recommendation on bid two one zero two two.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. The evaluation team has reviewed the bids received for bid two one zero two two. The Ada County Jail roofs, sections seven and eight, two thousand twenty-one, would like to submit a recommendation letter for your consideration. And I have that letter here if you'd like me to read it into the record.
Please.
All right. Dated February 2nd, two thousand twenty-one, to the Board of Ada County Commissioners from Ada County Procurement regarding bid two one zero two two. Dear members of the board, after reviewing the bids submitted, it is a recommendation of the evaluation group to award the contract for bid two one zero two two to Nations Roof Mountain LLC as the lowest responsive bidder for the total bid amount of four hundred and forty-five thousand, one hundred dollars. Sincerely, me.
Did you say Nations Roof?
Nations Roof Mountain LLC.
Okay, and that's, we opened that bid like last week.
We did, yes. Mr. Chairman, we opened it here in the open business meeting.
Right, okay. We have discussion on the bid.
Chair?
Yes.
Just like to check with Bruce, make sure that the process went well and you're happy with the outcome.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, commissioners, we are. We're looking forward to keep going on our roof replacement out there at the jail. Most, we've replaced approximately half the roofs out there now, and we're continuing on with replacements of end-to-life roofs at the jail. It's a big, big buildings.
It must be.
Section by section, we're not.
Section by section, all right. Do we have any further discussion?
With that, Chair, then I'll move to accept the recommendation of the valuation committee and award bid two one zero two two, Ada County Jail roof, sections seven and eight, two thousand twenty-one, to Nations Roof Mountain LLC in the amount of four hundred and forty-five thousand, one hundred dollars.
Is there a second to the motion?
Mr. Chair, I'll second.
You've heard the motion. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion to signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Great. We'll build her off, all right, or repair her off. Replace! All right. Yeah, we'll make it so it doesn't leak. Yes, yes, thank, thank you. I'm now going to open a public hearing on resolution number two six zero one, the resolution setting accessory fees for vehicle licensure and registration. Is there anyone who would like to provide testimony?
Mr. Chairman, I would if I may.
Thank you. Mr. Assessor.
Mr. Chairman, it's, DMV is completely fee-supported and it always, it always has been. And by statute, the commissioners set the admin fee, and in two thousand nineteen, we reduced the admin fee from three dollars and five cents to two eighty-five. And the reason I'd come to the commissioners back then to do that is we were collecting, our revenues were exceeding our expenses anywhere from two hundred thousand to four hundred thousand. And I'd gone to previous commissioners and asked if we could reduce the admin fee, because my philosophy is that revenues should match the expenses. And what was happening was that excess revenue, those earnings were being turned back into the county. And I remember once I had asked the commissioners if we could reduce the fee, and I was told, no, we need that money to go back into the general fund to offset property taxes. And I just, I didn't think that was really appropriate, but that was their decision. So we've had two hundred thousand, four hundred thousand. Last year, we saw our first loss in the years I've been running motor vehicles. We lost about twenty thousand dollars. And that's in due because we've been seeing increasing costs, labor costs. And a couple of years ago, we moved out of the Benjamin property onto Franklin where the sheriff wanted the space that we were using for motor vehicle services. And that was an increase in expenses. I just want to show you where we are. Mr. Chairman, I'm going to pass this up to you.
Thank you. Commissioner Kenyon?
Thank you.
Commissioner Davidson? This is a graph of the revenues and expenditures. The two most important lines on this, the straight line, the dotted green line, you see, that's the the smoothed out stream of the revenues from two thousand fifteen projected up to twenty-two. The red are the expenses. And if you'll notice, there was a gap, a sizable gap between two thousand fifteen, and those were the earnings that we were turning back in. Well, if you go forward to today, those lines are converging, and that just really is not, is not sustainable. Without the, with the increase that we're asking for, by the way, we're asking for an increase of going up to three seventy-five. With that increase, you'll see that new set of lines starting in two thousand twenty-one, that revenues are up and higher than what the projected expenses are going to be. That will give us kind of more of a cushion and a better position to be in. When I say a better position, I think that it's nice to have a cushion, but we had a loss of twenty thousand last year, and if we have a cushion of a hundred thousand, I feel much more uncomfortable. Again, any excess of that is going to be going back into the general fund. This increase of ninety cents will be about a hundred thousand dollars additional revenue for us. Right now, our projected revenue is about eighty-seven thousand. Our expenses are just rapidly increasing, so we just don't feel comfortable with the two eighty-five where we're at today. A real, another real important consideration is, and we mentioned this in a meeting yesterday, that we are going to be turning over deal title work to the Transportation Department. It's going to be for one year. And it's just going to be a pilot project to see how it works. Either, at the end of that, either one of us can say we're going to do it or not, going to continue doing it. But when we turn that over to them, not this year, they're exploring the idea of maintaining the fee. We get three dollars per deal of title. They would keep that, they would let us keep that for one year. We're generally, that three dollars per title generates about twenty-five thousand dollars per month. When they take that over, let's say in a year, they don't reimburse us, we're going to have a loss of three hundred thousand dollars in revenue. There's an advantage of them taking over deal title for us right now. One, it's been difficult for us to keep up, but also it will free up, and when this takes effect, probably in March, it will free up four clerks, and we really need four clerks out of motor vehicles now. It's, that's one of the reasons we've been having some long lines are that. So, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Kenyon, Commissioner Davidson, that's the case why, why I'm asking for an increase of the admin fee from two eighty-five to three seventy-five.
Is there discussion from the board?
Chair, back here.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So I have a couple of questions, Bob. So the two eighty-five to the three seventy-five, what is that, that gross annual amount, so for twelve, twelve months? What would that give us in terms of increased revenues?
For, it'd be a hundred thousand dollars.
About a hundred thousand.
One hundred.
And then the three dollars and seventy-five cents, so I assume that comes from sort of a cost of service analysis, right, that your office has done?
Yes.
Okay, does that include capital costs?
No, we don't really see any capital costs at this point in time.
Okay.
Just operating costs.
Okay, so just operating and personnel. Okay. So this, Chair, this is one of the issues that I want to bring up, is the master's facility plan has never had a financial plan attached to it, so, except for last year when we finally started. And so I would like to see us take a holistic look. If you look at a cost allocation model, you need to look at capital improvements and the cost of those as well, and designate out per square footage, for example, what those costs would be. Otherwise, we're never going to be able to continue to fund or, or grow any facilities in the future. So that's one thing that I would want us to take a look at moving forward.
Well, I appreciate that, Commissioner. I think that's, that was the exact same question I was going to ask, is, is your, your expenses are primarily payroll, what you're saying, right?
Labor is about, I think, about ninety percent of the costs.
But in the business, that's not, that's not an accurate representation. You do have capital expenses. You do have the cost of the, of the facility.
IT.
IT, yeah. Is there some way you could put all that together and so we can see an actual cost?
Oh, of course.
As opposed to, as opposed to just the, the, because from, from what I'm getting from you, these are labor costs.
Yes, that's, if, ninety percent might be an overstatement. Probably eighty, eighty-five percent is, is labor, though.
Yeah, and so, so it would be an inaccurate statement to say, well, some of that money should go into the general fund. Who pays for all this other stuff? Who pays for the IT? Who pays for the capital costs?
Mr. Chairman, most of our IT costs, if I've got this right, are associated with Transportation Department. They maintain a lot of that for us.
Maybe they should get an increase.
Yeah. And one thing, too, Mr. Chairman, again, as I mentioned yesterday, we are really in a state of flux with, with, with motor vehicles right now. We've got the new software that's being rolled out. We've got, looking at, reading ourselves of the, of the dealer title work. ITD also wants to do the mail, so the mail will go direct, they want to centralize that service. So we can see a dramatic change in the way we're doing business in the next, next two or three years. And again, as I mentioned yesterday, there is talk about privatizing ITD. I could see in five years where the county is completely out of the drivers, at, at least the motor vehicle services, for sure. It's, I'm not saying that's going to happen, but it's certainly a possibility.
Well, that would be an interesting.
So that's what we're trying, we've got all of these things going on right now. It's, we've got the certainty of what's happening today, the long lines and long waits with these new methods of delivery of service that are being discussed.
Well, Mr. Assessor, nothing is more frustrating than standing in a long line in a government office. That's frustrating.
Yes.
People don't understand it. I mean, and I can tell you, I appreciate your, the online service, because after my experience in the end of October, I was bound and determined to not repeat that experience, and I got, I got the renewal. Online was quick, online, within, I don't know, a week. I was surprised it came that fast. Congratulations. That was a good job.
Thank you. The online service is the, is the only delivery mechanism right now that is, is really working great. There's about a twenty-four hour time on the online service. The mail, there's been significant delay on that. It's, but the online service has worked really well. Thank you for those.
Well, I thought it worked really well.
We were the first county to go online. Gosh, I don't know what it was, maybe twenty years or so ago, we worked out a deal with Transportation Department. We were the pilot county in the state and, you know, being very successful. I don't know how many counties are online now, but we were, we initiated that.
Well, that's, I appreciate it. It worked good for, worked good for my family.
Chair.
But I'm sure it would work good for others if they, of course, there's a lot of people that have other businesses besides this renewal that, that they need to stand in line for.
There are. Someone was there the other day with thirty-four transactions.
Oh, wow. Wow. Well, anything you can do to help reduce that, that line and that wait for our, for our, for Ada County residents would, I'd be highly appreciated by me and I'm sure the rest of the board. And I appreciate bringing that up about the, the capital costs and so forth, because that is a part of the, of the overall expenses. And we need to have that, I think, reflected in the, in the cost.
Yes. Mr. Chairman, I can have put together a trend line of the different areas of expenses, labor and some of the, and the other expenses, and just get that over to you for your information.
Well, I'm sure operations can give you an idea what, what the, what the cost of the, of the facility and the.
Yes.
I appreciate. Is there further, is, go ahead.
By the way, Mr. Chairman, we are renting, leasing those facilities. We do not own any of the motor vehicle services.
We rent them, so there's a cost on the rent.
Of course, of course, right.
Yes, yes.
No, that's, it's, it's a large cost, but.
And that's not reflected in, in, in.
Yeah, it is.
This one, but it's not reflected in the, in the whole, whole cost and structure of it.
Chair?
Yes.
Chair back. What I would recommend is, we do have resources in HR. I don't know how long it would take her. We have a PhD who does, can do business analysis. And so I would suggest that Bob's team get with, with Amy and see if they can't do a full cost service analysis that include capital facilities costs.
Well, I, I would concur, because that's what we need. We need to have a, we need to have an overall cost of capital, everything. What, what does it actually cost to provide this service? And that's what should be reflected here, I think.
Mr. Chairman, we have an analyst on staff, an MBA, really a bright guy. I'll have him go with that person over there.
Well, great.
We'll do that analysis.
Well, thank you. Do you have any, any other, anything else you'd like to talk about? I guess there's nobody else. Anybody online would like to talk about? This is a public hearing.
So I guess my question today would be, do we want to go ahead and approve the increase to three seventy-five, so at least we're seeing, you know, the income come in, why we are going forward with the cost of service analysis? And then we can readjust once that's done, because that could take a couple of months. Or do we want to wait?
I just seem, go with what we have. Can always change it if we, if we determine that we need to change it, correct?
Mr. Chairman said go with we have the three seventy-five.
Yeah.
Yes, yes, that would be my preference. Let's go three seventy-five. If a year from now, we're collecting revenue, I'll be the first one to come back in.
Okay.
And say our revenue is exceeding the expenses and we need to adjust it down. I don't like seesawing the admin fee, but I, I think right now this would be the most prudent decision to increase it to three seventy-five.
I doubt most people would notice it.
No, but when they, when we add those other four clerks on, they're going to notice.
Well, yeah, that's what we want, and that's what we want. We want to, we want to increase service, and I appreciate what you're doing with, with working with the line and telling them they can go sit in their cars and get their phone number. And I'd say that's, I think that's.
Makes such a difference.
That makes a real difference, and I'm sure it'll make a difference in the overall attitude of people that.
We have seen that.
I thank you. I thanks for doing that. That's, that's great. I'm going to close the public hearing. Is there any further discussion from the board?
Not for me. So Chair will move to approve the resolution, number two six zero one, is listed on the agenda to increase the fees from two eighty-five to three seventy-five.
Is there a second?
Mr. Chair, I'll second.
Thank you. Is there discussion on the motion?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
And thanks for coming, Mr. Assessor. I think I'm leaning towards voting for this. Maybe in another year, I wouldn't be as much, but I think with COVID and the long lines and sort of the critical situation we're in, if, you know, this small increase, less than a dollar, could help alleviate some of the problems. And I'd be inclined to vote for it. And also the fact that you've come before a previous board and asked to decrease it, you know, gives me a lot of confidence that you're keeping an eye out for the taxpayer's best interest. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
I'd like to make this, yeah, another comment, too. I agree with that. Commissioner Davidson, I also agree that users should pay for fees and, and property tax owners, residential should not be subsidizing those fees. So I'm really wanting this board to move towards what we just talked about, that cost of service analysis, and we can figure out how we can hopefully get some property tax relief.
Commissioner, I think we're all in unison on that.
All right, then. I'll say yes.
Okay, we've, we have a motion and a second on the, to approve resolution two six zero one. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye.
Most carries, thank you. Public hearing closed. We're on to, uh, operations. Warranty deed for property boundary adjustment, new maybe Ada County Coroner Facility.
Yes, Mr. Chair, commissioners, this is just to finalize and, have you worked on this other? I haven't directly, but I see Ammon's here.
Ammon's up there.
Was he? Is he up there? I believe this is just to finalize the combination of two lots into one, in the deed, and to memorialize it as such, one property instead of two parcels.
Okay. Do we have discussion?
Chair, maybe, maybe Ammon might have something he wants to say.
Do you have discussion, Ammon?
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, if you'd like me to give a brief overview, I can do that. This is two parcels of property the county purchased in June of last year. Those were two separate parcels, and as part of the development process, the City of Meridian has asked that they be consolidated into a single parcel through a property boundary adjustment application. And that is what is before you now, is a warranty deed that will accomplish that consolidation that has been requested by the City of Meridian, so.
Thank you, Ammon. May I have a motion?
Sure. Do you want to go ahead and close the public hearing?
This isn't a public hearing.
Oh, okay, this one isn't. Okay, I'll make the motion then. I approve to, I move to approve the form of the warranty deed and authorize the chair to send the appropriate documents on behalf of the board.
Is there a second?
I will second.
Is there discussion on the motion? No discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Most carries. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioners, thank you.
Next, we have license ratifications. Are there any questions to the license ratifications? Or anybody, you have a discussion on?
No, Mr. Chair, you've seen them. You signed them. No discussion from us.
Okay.
With that, Chair, I'll move to ratify and approve licenses as listed on the agenda and authorize the chair to send the documents on behalf of the board.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there discussion on a motion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Thank you. Clerk's office, we need to designate polling places for the CUNA school district election. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I will. Pursuant to Idaho Code thirty-four dash three oh two, I move to designate the polling places as presented by the clerk.
I'll second that.
Is there, or the discussion?
Mr. Chair, I, I saw the list of polling places. I was curious if they're identical to current polling places. Is there somebody from the clerk's office here involved?
Right in front of you.
Right in front of you.
Yes, they are the historic polling places that we've had for almost all elections. There's always one or two that swap based on circumstances. It's mostly the churches. Sometimes we'll have events where they can't allow an election in there and we'll have to go to a different location. But if there is a change in location, every single voter that is registered to that precinct will get notification that there is a change in the precinct location. And so we've taken great strides to make sure everybody knows where to vote. We also have two early voting sites for this, even though it's a small election. You know, history shows that people have habits of coming to Benjamin Elections Office to early vote, even though it's, the election's taking place on CUNA. So we decided to keep that early voting site open for folks, as well as the CUNA City Hall, which we will be having early voting there as well. Schools are pretty standard, and they, they don't change a whole lot for us, so.
Thank you. Thank you. There's been a motion. Is there further discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
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 Carries, thank you.
Mr. Chair, just one more thing for the clerk's office. The clerk's office was recognized in GFPA a little while back, and this is the magazine that listed us as the number one out of the country in terms of transparency. And there's a really good article in there. We'd like to circulate it amongst the commissioners. If you'd like to take a look at it, it's tabbed in there. And Phil, that's his prized magazine, so if he, if it goes missing, he knows where you live. He'll come back and get it, but he did want you to take a look at it. He's, he's also provided a copy to the legislature as well, who's working on transparency bill right now, to let them know that we, we take it serious and we're doing everything we can to make sure people know what we're doing here, so.
Well, excellent. Well, thank you for that. We'll, we'll sure take a look at it, review it, and.
And congratulations.
Congratulations.
To your, to your office.
To Phil.
Thank you.
And all of you guys.
All your office, yeah. Absolutely. Thank you. That's, that's great. Okay, we have next the Claims Journal. I'll entertain a motion on the Claims Journal.
Yes, Chair, I move to authorize payment of claims in the Claims Journal dated January twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-one.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
I will second.
Move and second it. Do we have a? Move and second it. Do we have a discussion on the Claims Journal? On the motion. Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
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 Will pay the Claims Journal.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I like that.
Appreciate that.
Okay, next are the personnel action forms.
Yes, Chair, I'll go ahead and move to approve the personnel action forms as listed on the agenda and that the summary sheet we're gonna file on file in the commissioner's office.
You're second.
Second.
We have most, then move and second it to approve the claims or the personnel actions. Uh, is there discussion? No discussion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Carries. Sessor, you have any updates for us?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I would just lead into the next item number eight, the tax cancellations. Uh, you see some of the property roll, that's the rolls that uh closed last year in July. Then we have the subsequent property roll and then the missed property roll, which closed at the end of the year. There are all homeowners exemptions uh which came to our attention after the roll was closed, other than the Great Sky. That is a manufactured home that uh there is significant mold damage to it and other damage that the praiser uh brought to our attention and would be due to damage based upon that. That's uh everything for the Sessors office, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Do we use the term tax cancellations for a reason? I'm just curious because it's, it's just a reduction. It's, it's an adjustment.
It's an adjustment, yeah.
Because I, I've had several questions. People call me up, why are they getting tax canceled? Well, it's not really.
Mr. Chairman.
I'm just, I'm just wondering about that.
Tax cancellation is the correct word and that is because as I was explaining last week, once you turn the roll over, it's gonna actually be a decrease in taxes. Once you've turned it over, uh, after you've done your order of equalization, it's a decrease in taxes and it's not the entire tax amount. It's just the is what it is. It's we reduce, making a change in the market value, which is.
So it's our overall tax cancellation. It's not just the, the, the.
It's just on these properties right here will have a decrease in market value, which is going to decrease the taxes.
Okay, all right.
But Chair, isn't that an adjustment? Does it say in statute that, that we need to use the term cancellation?
I don't know if it's by statute, but that is the appropriate term. Uh, the, the Tax Commission recognizes that. I'll, I'll check into that.
Well, let's check into it because I, I think it's a little misleading because it's, it's, for these parcels, they still pay taxes.
Oh, indeed.
That's the idea.
It's an adjustment.
It's, it's an adjustment for these parcels, so.
We'll check into that.
I appreciate you checking on the verbiage a little bit so that uh our, our, our people who follow these things
Yes.
uh will understand that we're not canceling anybody's taxes. We're just kind of reducing, correcting a mistake that was made on the roll.
When we uh go over this next week, I will report to you.
I, I appreciate that. I'm sure you would as well, right? Okay, may uh, do we have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I'll uh move to approve the tax cancellations as listed on the agenda, which and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I'll second that.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Do we have any just further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you. We've got, we're moving right along.
Hey, Beth. Good morning.
I don't know if we can do this one. That's a pretty large sum.
I know. Twenty dollars, yeah.
Twenty-nine ninety-seven, I think.
Thank you. It's all yours.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair and commissioners. I'll just pick up on the tax cancellations, adjustments, reductions. Um, thank you for promptly signing those and to your staff for returning them to us. Um, these are something that we are processing daily. So once we receive those and process those, we do reach out to the taxpayer and provide them with their new tax liability. So thank you and we'll get right on these tomorrow as soon as we get them from you.
Thank you.
And then before you, for consideration today is a request for a waiver of late charge in interest. Again, the total amount is twenty-nine dollars and ninety-seven cents. I will note that the taxpayer has paid this amount, um, but it was paid after the due date. Um, the taxpayer was very conscientious of wanting to stop the accrual of additional interest. So made the payment, subsequently reached out to you requesting this waiver. I've reviewed the facts of this case and it appears that there was an error in the county records and I would recommend that this waiver be granted.
Thank you. Is there uh is there any discussion on it from the board?
No, Chair, I've reviewed the document. It was a, this one was a handwritten document from the lady. Yeah, so I'm ready to make a motion. I move to approve the waiver of late charges and interest for the twenty twenty property rules listed on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
Is there a second?
I will second.
Is there further discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you.
Thanks, Beth.
I understand we have a request for consideration uh from Jim County on dispose, disposal of wooden grandstands. Is there?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Steve Rutherford, your COO, uh, in his office, uh, or in my office. I also have Jess uh Asla on the, on the line. Um, we are here today to dis, to discuss briefly. Commissioner Bill uh Utichi from Jim County sent me an email last week on they, they're dismantling some uh wood grandstands from their fairgrounds that were put up in the early sixties. Uh, and they've, they've, they've decided to destroy those and, and get them hauled off. They've had them lead lead paint tested and DEQ uh said it was fine to, to go ahead and, and put these things in a landfill, but it has to be a lined landfill. And so they have asked, uh, because we have one of those, uh, that, that we, that we accept uh this waste. Initially, I put this on for discussion so that you all could um give us direction about whether or not we should go through with the process of testing. Uh, because typically our staff will do their own testing and um, and we wanted to get direction. If you were even kind of remotely interested in taking this trash, we'd go out and get that tested. We've subsequently been provided the test by Jim County. Um, Jess's folks have, uh, Chad Schwend has tested, uh, reviewed the test results and is satisfied that they uh meet the DEQ standards and Ada County landfill standards. And so they are prepared um to go forward. So I guess I'd like to have a little bit of a discussion with you um and Jess about um, about accepting this waste. Apparently the structure is a hundred and sixty feet long, thirty feet in depth and twenty rows high. Um, they, they, Jim County will pay uh whatever fees Ada County charges uh for disposal of this wood waste. And uh they are, they're somewhat of a timeline apparently with this. Um, if the board is inclined to uh permit Jim County to bring this waste to Ada County, uh, we would have a legal prepare a resolution. Because your ordinance says you only accept Ada County waste, you have to make an exception and we do that through a legislative act called, called the resolution. We've done it before and uh, and so that, that's kind of our path forward if you decide you wanna, wanna have this waste.
Okay. Other questions on the board?
Yes, Chair, back. So um going along the lines of our mission out there, reuse, repurpose, recycle, um, have we looked at all? Or have they looked at all other alternatives um other than dumping this into a landfill?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Canyon, my understanding is because there is a small lead-based, uh, there is a small um low lead concentration in this, they've been painted over and over and over again over the years and there is a small concentration of lead, they wouldn't be appropriate for uh reuse, but just.
So there's no, yeah, there's no treatment that, I don't know. I, I don't know much about, you know, lead and maybe Jess can weigh in here. But so there's just absolutely no way to, to treat the, the wood so we can repurpose or reuse it?
Uh, yes, uh, Commissioner and Chair, that, that is my understanding as well is that, that the process by which possibly to clean up some of the lead out of the wood would cost more than the wood's probably worth. Uh, and as is, it's not really uh repurposable or recyclable, so it, it really should probably go into a landfill. And as uh Mr. Rutherford pointed out, it has to go into a lined landfill. We are really the only lined landfill in this area. But we do have to obviously test. We don't take everything. It has to pass certain tests and the tests that Jim County did have done were, were done by a third party, uh, an outside consultant firm uh named Atlas. And we analyzed those results and they do meet the thresholds that EPA and OSHA put on. And the Department of Environmental Quality is, is plus that is acceptable for our landfill if we're so inclined. And they will be charged uh twenty-nine dollars a ton, just like every other citizen's charge.
All right.
Um, yeah, I'm okay with it. It's a neighboring county. I'd like to be a good neighbor. If there's, if you've exhausted all other potential opportunities to dispose of this and it's the last last uh thing on the agenda or on the list, um, then I would go ahead and move to approve it.
Well, we can't prove it right today because they, you need to bring a resolution, correct?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Rutherford, so we'll, we'll have to get a resolution, I understand. And we can do that.
And if that's the board's inclination, Mr. Chair, I'll have one drafted and we'll get it to you for approval next Tuesday.
Well, do you have any comments, uh, Commissioner?
No, I'd like to vote on the resolutions, so.
Well, the resolution will be next week.
Exactly.
Yeah, well, I, I would uh incline, be inclined to, to uh be a friendly neighbor to our uh Jim County. Uh, and if we can accommodate it and doesn't cost us uh any extra, uh, because that, that was my first question when it was wood. If we're not going to be chopping it up and then paying to somebody to remove it, because that's what they do out there, right?
Right.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
But that would, would they, they would, are they, will, will they bring it all chopped up or I, you know how that will come?
Uh, their, their plan is to, to disassemble it and make it uh in small enough chunks to, to haul it. Um, and then, yeah, they'll just, they'll just put it right in the, right in the pile and big yellow tractors will roll right over.
We'll, we'll, we'll cover it up and squeeze it. Well, I'd be inclined to, to support a resolution that affects, so why don't you go ahead and prepare that? And uh, we'll be, we'll be friendly neighbors.
Sounds good. Thank you, Board.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Okay, approval of minutes.
Yes, Chair, I'll move to approve the minutes as identified on the agenda and authorize the chair to send the documents on behalf of the board.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Uh, hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay. Weeden passed. May, do we have?
I'll move to approve the release of lien for Weeden Pass as listed on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
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 Do we have that? Expo Idaho.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner.
Yes. Good to see you.
You too. Thank you for having me. Um, this is a, an extension of a contract. We have truck storage. There's a, I don't know if I can say that right, Aspland Tree Company that has been servicing trees around for Idaho Power. Um, they want to extend that lease out there. It's on a dirt lot and we see no issues with that, so uh, we'd like that extension if possible.
Sure.
Okay.
Is this a six month or annual lease or month to month?
These have been going three months at a time.
Three months at a time. Okay.
Yep.
Yep, I'll move to approve.
And so we have talked to the Hawks. This is where they're behind their kinda, so we're, we're working with the partners as soon as they get up in business.
So you have to come back here every three months, get it approved?
That's just the process. You get to see my lovely face every time this happens.
Well, I don't mind that.
If it's not happy for you, then I'll go away.
I don't know. Okay, well.
Yeah, Chair, I'll move to approve the one interim event agreement as listed on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign a document on behalf of the board.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you so much. We'll be cutting trees.
Yeah. Next up.
About the landfill to be chipped.
Yeah, then we have to pay to haul it out. Uh, next up, Parks and Waterways. Barbara Park Education and Event Center. Anybody here to talk about that?
I don't think Scott's with us, Chair, but I'll go ahead and make the motion. This is for a twenty-one, twenty twenty-one event. So this is far, far enough out. Um, and we do have the, the uh COVID addendum to our agreement. So with that, I'll go ahead um, and move to approve the one Barbara Park Education Event Center agreement as listed on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
Is there a second for the motion?
I will second that.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
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 Most carries.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Just related to Parks and Waterways and uh Western Idaho Fair, we had talked previously about trying to communicate maybe to the Central District Health, you know, or desire to be a little bit more open or uh about events, but um Commissioner Canyon mentioned, you brought to the attention that it's kind of two different things where one is more of a gathering, social thing. The other people are, you know, trafficking, moving around. So I think in talking with Bob, I'm, maybe we'll keep, I'll try to keep the issue separate before I bring something to the board and bring something specifically dealing with Western Idaho Fair and not combine the two. Maybe we can tackle that separately.
Okay. Thank you. All right. We have uh agreements. Overtime compensation agreement between Ada County and the Transportation Department and professional service agreement between Ada County and CSHQA. Is there a discussion on any of the agreements on today's agenda?
Yes, Chair, I believe agreement one four one three one, um, will need at some point to open up the budget to accept that uh additional revenues coming in. Um, so I'm fine with uh, with that agreement. Anytime ITD wants to pay us for the extra work we're doing, that's a good thing, huh, Bob?
Mr. Chairman, uh, Mr. Canyon, yes.
Okay.
And then I have no problem with agreement one four one three two and don't need to discuss that.
May I have a motion on the agreements?
Sure, I'll go ahead then and move to approve the agreements as listed on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the appropriate documents on behalf of the board.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
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 Procurement. How are you doing?
Hey, Bob.
All right, bye-bye. Thank you.
Bye-bye. All right, uh opening of uh RFP two one zero one nine, Ada County Sheriff's Office Design Bill of Radio Communication Site. We have, tell us about it.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd be happy to uh discuss this project with you and um Ada County Procurement received three proposals for this project. Um, it's RFP two one zero one nine, Ada County Sheriff's Office Design Bill of a Radio Communication Site. And this site is uh for the sheriff's office. It's a communication tower up in the Alamo area. And um Robin has our Bonfire E-Procurement uh system queued up there and um if you're ready for us to open the proposals, we can proceed.
All right.
Let's go.
All right, Robin, go ahead and open them up.
Feel like there should be some Jeopardy music right now.
Yeah.
You can go ahead, Bob.
I don't think I did any justice. Okay, there we go. All right. So, Mr. Chair, under the supplier header out there, we have the three proposers that have proposed on this project. If you'd uh like to read those into the record.
Go ahead, read them into the record. Okay, perfect.
Um, uh, the first supplier is Day Wireless Systems. The second um contractor is Dickman LLC and finally the third is Motorola Solutions Incorporated. So those are our three proposers that have proposed on this project.
Chair, before we make a motion, I just wanted um to ask a couple of questions. This came before us quite a while ago on the need for the radio communication site. Um, is that uh basically because of the um additional homes that have been built up in the Alamo area? Or is it for the surrounding area or I just want to make sure that our Ada County residents, other. Or I just want to make sure that our Ada County residents, other Ada County residents subsidizing Avamoore and this tower is being built just because of the increased population?
Sure, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Canyon, we have Stephanie Johnson on the line with us up there and she's the project manager for this particular project. If you'd like, I think she could probably answer that question a little better about that particular.
And who is Stephanie with?
Stephanie is with the Sheriff's Office, she's the nine eleven technical operations manager. So Stephanie.
Excellent.
I'm actually going to throw this over to Director Omera, he has the backstory on this through ECPC, so.
Okay, all right.
Good morning, Board. Apologies, Bob, for changing the script there. Stephen Omera, Ada County IT Director and Director of IT for Ada County Sheriff's Office. Mr. Chair, Ms. Canyon, the 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 scope of this work has to do with certainly the growth in the area of people that have moved into the area and certainly there's, there's more calls for service. But the reality is, the two things that cause a problem for radio networks, be they public safety radio or even cellular, the two things are dirt and distance, a distance between towers and hills where it caused problems for communications. So the the area there, like many places of of Ada County, has a coverage problem already. When there are, when there are fires in the hills, obviously we have BLM and our own fire agencies that within C's Ada County are up there fighting fires. They're, they experience, they experience communications issues that they have to cover. When you start moving population into the area, that only compounds things. The funding mechanism for this is not at all based on property taxes. I believe that may be part of the question you're going for there, Commissioner Canyon. It is, its entire project is funded by the Emergency Communications Fund. And as Board of Ada County Commissioners has put forth, the Emergency Communications Planning Committee, which is a group of individuals, basically all the fire chiefs, police chiefs, and our EMS chief get together to talk about what we should use the Emergency Communications Fund for. This is one of those things, is better communications in that area. Obviously, you've got a highway that rolls through there, there are car wrecks, people need help. Certainly, Avamoore is a big piece, but then even the foothills still catch on fire around there whether there's a neighborhood in the area or not. I hope that that satisfies some of that question. And for those of you that are new or aren't familiar with the Emergency Communications Fund, that money is driven by telephone bills. Each cellphone, each wireline phone per month pays a dollar based on a nine one one fee. And that comes to Ada County and that is the Emergency Communications Fund I'm referring to today. Again, no property tax involved in this, no general vol, general fund is involved in this either. It is specifically out of the Emergency Communications Fund.
Thank you, Steve, that answered all of my questions, very thorough.
Thank you, Steve. Answered my questions.
Thank you.
Okay.
Chair, you want me to go ahead and make a motion to, I think we need to table the final rankings and award recommendation for RFP two one zero one nine?
Well, we just announced them there, but we do need to go through an evaluation at time. And and we would like to recommend that this be tabled for final ranking and award consideration to the February sixteenth, two thousand twenty one Open Business Meeting.
Okay.
Okay.
So I'll move to table the final ranking and award recommendation for the RFP two one zero one nine, Ada County Sheriff's Office Design Bill of the Radio Communication Site, February sixteenth, twenty twenty one.
Thank you, do we have a second?
Second.
Is there discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Mr. Chair?
We're good, yes.
Could I ask, Stephen, is it basically just a tower? Is that what we're talking about?
Yeah, it is a tower. It's on top of a hill, it won't be a very large tower, but it's also the equipment that actually makes all the radio stuff work. So antennas and cabling and then, of course, the transmitters and receivers, which is equipment on the ground.
And are other counties able to access that as well or just Ada County?
Yes, the, the radio network that Ada County owns is part of the statewide radio network. All the other counties plug in, we plug into each other. And so if anybody, anybody drives in, another emergency responder for whatever reason rolls through Ada County, he or she can use our radio network and this will be just an extension of that. So it's right on the Gem border, so it'll definitely be helping folks out over there. And I, I'm sorry, it may be on the Boise border, Boise County border. So it also strengthens them, they'll, they'll have the ability to use the system as well. But it's, it's really for our our northern side over there.
Chair, back. I have a question with our cellphone towers. Most of the ones that we have been approving have the, the pine design, right? Looks like a pine tree. What's the extra cost of, and I don't know if that's even possible for these types of structures, but if it is, what's the extra cost of doing something like that? So we don't, if they're our neighbors, it's a big eyesore?
Well, I I don't have any fresh numbers for that. I used to, I used to work in that industry a while ago, been a long time. It adds a significant amount to the cost to do a stealth tower. And what, and this is all personal. So we should, if if that's something we would need to do, we would need to talk to somebody who's involved in that currently. But I can tell you, as someone on the carrier side, it invites a lot of people complaining about how obnoxious they are because it's quite clearly a cell tower. And now every time I drive by, I look at that really stiff looking pine tree. And then there's the maintenance to make it look sort of like a pine tree because they fade and all that stuff. So fair question. I know that, and I'm not sure if Development Services, I don't think they're in the room. But I know that communicating with the people that live around there, we do have to go through the process to talk with them when this thing is built. And we'll see if they bring that up and we'll cross that bridge at that point.
Perfect. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. There being no further business, we're in recess.
Thanks, Commissioners.
Thank you.